For the Buckingham County Planning Commission meeting for June 26. Please stand, as Commissioner Schumaker will lead us under invocation and Commissioner Goldwood will lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for your blessings in our community. Please guide us to make the best decisions here for our neighbors in our county tonight, and please bless us with your traveling mercies as we leave. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to Sabbath of a quorum. We have seven of eights, so we do have a quorum. Nikki, is there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, the only potential change could be regarding a presentation for Old Business, which is the public hearing regarding case 23 SGP 327. For a little bit of a technical difficulty, I may ask for permission if we could swap the introduction of one of the new cases just for timeframe.
Okay.
Just because the cord that we need to be able to show the propagation maps is what's needed, and we'll also need that for the other two introductions as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Technical, bit of technical difficulties we have in this evening.
All right. In other words, we may shuffle the schedule a little bit to accommodate getting our technicals. So, do I have a motion approved with that possible change?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Agenda's approved. We have approval of minutes for our work session, May 15, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve as presented, or does someone have changes? So moved. To approve.
Second.
I'd have a motion in a second to approve as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. That's approved. Have a minutes for May 22, regular meeting. Any changes? If not, I'll have a motion to approve as presented.
Approve as presented.
Okay. Second. Have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Approved. Okay. Thank you. That brings us to public comment period. Do we have people signed up for the public comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. We have six individuals signed up. The first person signed up is Jerry Sackett, and he will be followed by Donna McRae Jones.
Okay. Just a quick reminder that we, the public comment can be anything going on in the county other than the one public hearing we have tonight for the cell tower. That's got its own time. But now open up the floor and ask the gentleman to come forward.
Within the ongoing discussions and discovery about the prospect of metal mining in Buckingham, it has been plainly and repeatedly shown that existing Virginia state regulations for mining are adequate only for gravel and quarry operations. The argument for a rights-based ordinance restricting or banning metal mining in our county has been put aside by our officials in order to wait for others to act. At a recent PC meeting, Mr. John Snoddy spoke of the benefits of our kaionite and slate quarries and good employment, et cetera, fine, advising just to leave things as they are and exercise common sense, as Mr. Snoddy Senior advised, and use the special use permit for control. However, uneducated common sense is folly. Real common sense would be founded on history. We should be learning from the mistakes of others and not blundering along as best we can. At this time, our board members are being educated about the issues of allowing or restricting potentially hazardous activities such as metallic mining. In 10 years, it will be a different group who likely will not have the benefit of present education to bolster their common sense instincts of well-being and survival. So we should be acting now to put protections in the hands of the local government, logs in the road, on the books, to slow down, deter, and hopefully prevent tragic consequences from catching future generations unprepared. I have brought up the tragedy of Leadville, Colorado to the Board of Supervisors, which clearly shows by government report that only after three generations of birth defects did the Health Department make steps to close down the mines and smelters polluting the soil, water, and air. The Leadville Metals Exposure Study commissioned in 1990 states that neurological defects in children were recognized as early as 1904. In 1943, researchers reported that effects on the intellectual achievements and behavior of schoolchildren were long-term. Yet, it was another 47 years until the metallic operations were shut down as a registered superfund cleanup site, 86 years since the discovery of gold in that region. No record of the toll in human suffering is offered in that report. Being a scientific report, it is dry and devoid of feeling, yet each of us may know someone who is afflicted by developmental disability or deformity and know it to be a lifelong heartbreaking burden for the individuals and families affected. Put yourself in their shoes. How would you feel if it was your child or grandchild? That suffering was preventable. As the Leadville report makes clear, prevention is better than cure. With this knowledge from history, let us learn from the past mistakes of others. Do not trust in statistics provided by industry experts alone, but insist on input from experts outside the mining trades. Trust in common sense that is educated and smart and not subject to the short-sighted non-action which kicks this dirty ball down the road. Act now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Donna McRae Jones. I live at 1806 Cairo Road, Cumberland, Virginia, and I am in District 2. It had come to my attention that one of the neighbors on Cairo Road is looking for a permit for M1 to do slaughter processing in the area. I stand myself with a couple of other people in the area. We have questions and doubting about this. In reading the, having sorted a copy of the application, one of the things that bothers us is, one, says eliminated of all nauseous orders. I don't understand how that can be guaranteed when you're dealing with waste from animals. In the court here, it says all processing will be done on the premises. And also, it does state that there will be no excess traffic of pickup trucks or semis, and I don't see how that can be guaranteed if he's going to be slaughtering animals. Most animals, if they're going to be live, as I understand, when they go to slaughter, because that's the process of it, usually they have trailers and whatnot. The property itself for which this activity is to take place is on a curve, and Cairo already has trucks coming from the lumberyard, which has been there for several years, at least since I've lived there 21 years. But that's in Cumberland County. But that's a lot of trucks that comes through there. As it is, when I come out, I have to take special care when I do come out because of the traffic. That would add excess traffic to our area. So at this point, I suggest that before anything be done, that a traffic testing be ordered by VDOT to access the traffic that comes through there, to see if this is practical to do for our little small area. Again, I said, so far, there has not yet been an accident, because a lot of us understand the traffic that's previously there, and we're cautious about pulling out. But people not familiar with the traffic in Rose to Cairo would not have that as much. So, one of the things I request as a resident is that a study be done on the traffic on Cairo. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Davis. I live at 1743 Cairo Road, where I've been a resident for about 30 years, so I live across the road from Donna. And I was approached by Samuel Stolzfuss about his desire to have a slaughterhouse and meat processing plant approximately 300 feet from my property line, and I have a lot of concerns. He said that he would do a minimum of 12 per week, and when I asked him about the waste, the non-edibles, he said he was going to do a composting pile, and that composting pile would be manure and sawdust, and I would not be able to smell it. And I also said that he would dispose of the blood, that it would be absorbed. So, I have a lot of concerns as far as health concerns, environmental concerns. When I told him that it would lower my property value, he said he knew that. And so, I have concerns about that as well, not to mention, as Donna said, the increased traffic that's going to be in the area, and the fact that we are zoned Ag 1, A1, and not M1. And so, doing a special permit to have an M1 in that District 2 will affect all of District 2. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Morales. I'm at 1808 Cairo Road, and Ms. McRae Jones brought this to my attention, and my bigger concern would be any waste disposal that I hadn't heard anything about. And second of all, we, the traffic is already unbelievably dangerous because of the trucks that come through for the wood mill. We have probably a higher percentage of Amish buggies even on our road that I think could be greatly affected by the additional traffic as well. So, I have concerns as well. I have a very small greenhouse pretty much across the street from where this is proposed, and I don't want my property values lowered either. So, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, Marie Flowers, Third District. My concern is the metal mining. I don't, I think the last time you had the work session, I asked you if, you know, we could meet with experts. I don't know what you all have done or talked to. Have you invited anyone who was, Ms. Kendehaneman was on that committee with the gold, with the state? And I don't, do not trust the state politicians to care about what happens in Buckingham County. And we just need to find a good way to protect our people. I'm not totally against mining. I want to see the people protected and the earth protected. And I know there are many elements and metals that we need for everyday life. But anyway, hoping that you all would do the best you can with the concern for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Heidi Divya Berto, and I live in District 5. My comments are for the record, because it appears that you're not listening, at least not to the Buckingham people. We collected about 1,000 signatures across the county for a petition supporting the rights-based ordinance that could protect us from the toxic trespass of metallic mining. Most of those people already knew how toxic metal mining is and how they poison and bankrupt communities. You don't seem to be moved by this information. At your work session last Monday, you decided you will stick with existing special use permits after consulting the experts. I've been to all your meetings. You have refused all expert consultation, choosing only to hear from Buckingham miners who have no expertise in metal mining. That is not what they do. They did not know there was a state study on gold mining. I have asked John Snoddy and Guy Dixon to read the four-page summary of the report. They live here, too. I said to John that once you understand the impacts of metallic mining, I would hope they, too, would want to stop it from coming here and would support the changes that are needed. Have you read the four-page summary of the National Academies of Sciences report that we sent to you? It appears that you, as individuals, don't seem to understand how bad metallic mining is. If you, if you did, then I think you would be acting quite differently. Pete seems to be the only one who gets how bad it is, and he needs help with making changes. What happened to banning the cyanide process, which would bypass the problems with banning metallic mining? I've not heard thorough discussion this, on this whole topic, which really requires it of us. So, who are the experts that you consulted? We gave you contacts with people who are experts in the field, who are willing to give you their time pro bono, but you thought they were, they would be biased. Mr. Wright met with Dr. Steve Emmerman, and they had a good exchange. Did he convey that to you, that it was helpful? Our communities have done, our other communities have done this, and successfully. You have examples in the Southern Environmental Law Center toolkit on regulating gold mining activities at the local level. Other Virginia counties have banned other mining activities. You can do it here, and it looks like you need to call SELC to help you figure it out, because you have not. You have agreed to create a new application form for miners. This is astonishing. You are not experts. This requires expert guidance. The state study tells us the state does not have adequate regulations. Their applications and regulations are geared towards gravel and sand mining. So you can't look to the state So, you can't look to the state of Virginia for help. We gave you examples of other states, such as Montana, that banned the, uh, that banned the process that uses cyanide, and countries that have successfully banned metallic mining, such as El Salvador. If El Salvador can do it, surely Buckingham can figure it out. You were tasked with banning new metallic mining. It looks like you need another opinion on how, on how Virginia code does allow you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
That, um, is public comment.
Okay, I'll call, close the public comment period. Uh, are we ready to do the public hearing, or do you wanna reschedule?
Ready.
Ready? Okay. All right, I'll move to old business. I'll let you introduce the case, and then I'll do the public hearing.
Yes, sir. This evening, um, we have a public hearing for Case Twenty-three SUP Three Twenty-seven. This is U.S. Cellular. The landowners are Rich and Terry Harris, located at two eleven Holland Road, Farmville, Virginia, two three nine zero one. And the applicant is U.S. Cellular. The agent is Emily Lauer. She's actually out of the office, and we have, um, her associate Ken Parrish in the audience with us this evening. Um, the request for, um, this permit for the purpose of constructing a one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-foot monopole communications tower is actually on tax map one ninety-six parcel thirteen. It's approximately forty-four point ninety-eight acres in size, and it is located at the two eleven Holland Road, Farmville, Virginia, address in the Curdwell Magisterial District. Um, this case was introduced to you last month. It does come with conditions that, um, should you find this permit to be favorable in this particular area in an A-One district, these, uh, conditions are confirmed with Cityscape, who is the consultant for the county, for the review of this tower, along with the agreement to the ordinance for Buckingham County. As I mentioned, the applicant is in the audience to discuss this case and answer questions or concerns. And I will add that Jamie, um, Shoemaker, our IT director, will be placing the propagation maps that you requested on the computer screens. They did not come in a printed-delivered format, but in an email. I hope they are clear enough to answer some of the questions that you had from last month.
Okay. Thank you, Nikki. Before we do the public period, does any of the commissioners have any questions at this time?
Yeah, on this, uh, as far as the VDOT goes, they got a signature from a Stephanie Rich, I'm not sure, commissioner, uh, from Erden Lynchburg. What it says, it was done on the eleventh twenty-eight twenty-two. And then at the bottom, it says, "This expires in sixty days." So, to me, we don't have no, uh, nothing legal for, for the road driveway or whatever coming.
There may be another copy in the packet. Is there anything further? Because Cityscape-
Well, it says it's not supposed to be used for once.
They'll have to get another one to move forward after the expiration.
They got it on both, both towers right now. Same one.
Cityscape should've addressed that as well in their comments. Even if they obtain another one, um, it'll still only be good for sixty days. And, but certainly, we can address this, and Ken Parrish with U.S. Cellular may be able to address that better for you, Supervisor Allen.
Okay.
But that was back in November.
Right, I understand. Uh, would you, uh, where, would you like to come forward, sir? I don't know. Yes, if you would, to, to answer these questions, please, sir. All right, you, you heard, just get your state's full name and all. You heard Mr. Allen.
B-Dot permit.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I had, I had a stroke about a year ago. My voice is a little messed up.
You all right?
Uh, yes, sir. They will require us to have a B-Dot permit and put a, a culvert in. And, and, and they require us to have that before we move forward.
Okay, it's not on him.
It's not on there.
No, sir. I didn't see it. It, uh, only thing I saw was, uh, that person from Lynchburg had signed it below what we normally get.
It didn't write a le- letter to you or give us a permit.
Uh, and then it, you know, it says, "This, this part expired in sixty days," which was back in November last year.
I'll look in our folder and see if we have one for you, and I can get it to her ASAP.
Thank you.
If we don't have one, we'll get you one.
All right, yeah. Okay. Before we sit down, is, uh, any other commissioners have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. These red dots that I'm looking at here are where other cell towers are?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And if I were to ask you, I guess what I was looking for was to understand a little bit about, if you put that cell tower there, would there still be gaps? I mean, how, are we filling gaps, or what, what are we doing here?
Yes, sir. We're trying to, we're trying to fill gaps in for the area. These are capacity sites, so you know, back in the older days, you seen them fifteen, twenty miles apart. Now, you're seeing them five miles apart. The old technology used to follow the contour of the land, and new technology is more of a straight-line technology, technology, excuse me. And, uh, what it is, is the sites, when you first build them, they cover a big area. The more phone calls, the area shrinks, and that's when you start dropping calls. And that's what we're trying to do, fill in the gaps.
So, if I were to, I guess it's too simple to ask, if we were to draw concentric circles around all these little red dots, does that make sense, so that we could see exactly the coverage that we're talking about?
It's in like a five-mile radius, so the new technology covers about five miles compared to the old technology, which covered twenty to fifteen to twenty miles. The new technology is more of a straight-line, straight-line technology.
So, you're saying, from these little red dots that we're looking at here, there's only a five-mile radius or diameter?
Five or so. I'm not a RF engineer. I just build them for a living, but they, that's what, they're, they're covering like less area because of the technology's not following the contour.
But it's a five-mile radius, correct?
Uh, I think so. I'm not sure on that. I could get your information on it.
That, uh, Ms. Edmondson, that, that was really the question I asked the last time. That's the kind of information I was looking to, to understand. I, I, I just don't know, I mean, we could put up cell towers all day long.
Yes, sir.
The point is that, you know, what we'd like to do is put up as few as we have to in order to cover the most area. I mean, I would think that's what we'd wanna do.
Yes, and less intrusive as well. I understand that.
Right. So, the question is, with all these little red dots, you know, what's covered and what's not? And is there a better area to put that cell tower? I don't know the answer to that. You do, but I'm saying, it would be pict- I would like to see it pictorially described.
Yes, sir. So, what it is, they give us a SARS, and we can get one of those to you for this area. They were looked in. They give us a SARS with a, a dot in the center, to say it was only like two miles or a mile and a half. We had to be within side that, and to find our property owner. That's how we find them. So, they, we don't decide where they go, and RF engineer sits behind a computer, and he sees where, what coverage they need. He says, "We're lacking coverage over here. We want you to find somebody close to that dot that you can get us." If that makes sense to anybody.
It does. I'd just like to see it.
Yeah, yeah, you wanna see the dots, I can get you-
I'd like to see the circles.
Yeah, I can get you the SARS, yes, sir. Yeah. And I wish I had those ahead of time. I'd buy up a bunch of land, and we'd have, own some towers. No, I'm just kidding you. But seriously, nobody knows where you gotta cover, but that's the reason you start seeing them so close together, we're losing calls, dropping calls. Like, you know, now when you go down, in a gap, in a gap, you know how you go down in a dip, you lose a call. You come back up, your call picks back up. Whatever. So, you're gonna see a lot of forty-foot telephone poles, but you'll start seeing them called small cells and CRANs. Their Verizon's doing it in front of like Walgreens and drugstores and stuff. You'll start seeing antenna on the telephone pole with a radio on it. They're gonna be everywhere.
So, they're not gonna be putting up these one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-foot towers anywhere? They're gonna start putting up antennas on telephone poles?
On some of them, yes, sir. Forty-foot telephone poles. They're called CRANs for U.S. Cellular. Uh, Verizon has small cells. And what it is, they're trying to get broadband and coverage for everybody, so you can have nine-one-one and broadband coverage. That's what they're doing. A lot of the bigger cities have already done it. And they put broadband and telephones on the smaller poles. If you look it up, uh, you can look it up, uh, small cells or CRAN sites, and they'll show you what, what it's about.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Hope that helped you.
That did. Any, any other questions before I do the public, um, public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On the propagation map, I would love to see, once again, the streets so that we can tell, in addition, in addition to the coverage, if you could also put on that map the highways, because I'm looking at this map, the one with the green. And what I'm seeing, I can't even read the roads on here. I have glasses on.
I got you.
I can't see the roads. I don't know where that is. Um, I'm told where it is, but surely, we can have a better visual than this.
Yes, ma'am, sure.
Okay, I just want the streets on there, better visual, please.
I'll get you a map showing, showing what, what we're covering, and I'll get you a map showing the roads.
Well, the roads and the coverage together. I want both of those on that same map. I don't need-
Don't need separate ones. I got you.
Compared, who, who would log that for me? Thank you. I appreciate that, but it's-
Yes, ma'am.
It doesn't tell me, it doesn't help me to compare to what it is now to what you anticipate the coverage to be.
Yes, ma'am, understood.
Okay.
Or show a, show a picture of, without the tower.
Yes, sir.
And then show a picture with the tower.
Showing where we don't have coverage.
How much, how much we increase, yeah.
Got you, okay.
And that's part I don't see. Oh, oh, is that what you just did?
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that's what they just flashed on the screen. I think she has a before and an after.
Okay, is that what the pink map was supposed to be? Go back to that first map that you pulled up.
Definitely wanna be friendly to all the communities, you know? Like he said, we wanna try to see less towers as we can. The problem is the technology has to put them closer. And you would think it would get better for distance, but-
Yeah, that's what I've always heard. You have more and more telephones, and slowly, you'll have to have more towers, and they're gonna be a whole lot closer together.
Yeah, it shrinks the cost. The old ones used to cover a bigger with the CDMA, the old CDMA, uh, technology, followed the contour of the land, whereas this is more of a straight-line technology.
Right.
It might go more than five miles. I'll get you that information as well.
Appreciate it, thank you.
A lot closer.
No, no, you're fine. Thank you.
Are you serious? Thank you. I mean, I can-
There you go. Okay, so that's before.
That's before.
Green gray.
What is the pink one, then? One with the pink, the red and pink dots?
Your service-
What is that screen? Yes? I have a, I see, they look virtually the same to me, sir. And, and there are no streets on there that I can identify. They look-
Average co-locations, like-
Make it bigger.
So, U.S. Cellular, and like you got U.S. Cellular, Verizon, and then you got, uh, uh, T-Mobile. They build their own towers, and then you got tower owners as well, like, uh, SBA, Crown Castle, uh, American Tower, such as, you know, that. So, a lot of their towers, they charge us too much for rent. So, it's cheaper to go and get somebody with the raw land to build their own tower instead of paying them rent.
Oh, I understand that principle. I'm just saying, for me to compare one of these to the other.
Yeah, I-
Just about the same to me.
Yeah, I'll get you-
So, I would like to be able to see it and say, "This one is better than the other one."
Okay, I'll get the, hold my RF engineer and get on a call with him and walk, and walk him through what you wanna see. And we'll get you something better.
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, before you leave, if I'm not mistaken, I'm looking at the before and after, the bef- where you show the proposed site on the right-hand, uh, map up there. The small, the little pink dots, that's the additional coverage? When you put that tower up there, in other words, it's, yeah. In other words, on the left-hand side, under six thirty-six, I don't see any pink dots at all. And then, when I go to the right side, I show a lot of little pink dots. That's the coverage? So, it looks, even though you're gonna put that tower there, it looks like it's a little bit sporadic. I mean, why wouldn't it be s-
Of the terrain of the land is that, we know, might be why it's losing the coverage. I'm not sure what the terrain is right there. If you got hills and stuff blocking the coverage, you're gonna have dead spots. That might be what they're showing you is, you're gonna get some coverage on sixty-three up higher.
Yeah, I hear ya.
But it's not as much lower, like you're saying. It's still got a dead spot between the sixty-three and whatever.
Yeah, you got a lot of dead spots, and all that yellow's a dead spot, isn't it?
We're trying to fill those, uh, so we're, we're, we got what they call a SARS out, and we're trying to fill the areas.
So, you're gonna put that tower up there, and you're still gonna have all this yellow dead spot in here?
Yes, sir, and we still might have to build more towers. That's exactly right.
And there's no better where, there's no better location for that tower to give you better coverage?
Not according to the RF engineers. Like I said, I'm not an RF engineer. I just build them for them. They decide where we put them.
If I look at this map, Ms. Edmondson, it seems to me we're gonna need about a, a bunch of porcupine quills out there.
Well, Mr. Kabischinsky, under the master plan for the, the county, which has been adopted in years past, it has been the practice of the county to want more smaller towers, and by smaller, I'd say one-hundred-and-ninety-nine feet or less. So, the ultimate plan at, at, at the beginning in twenty-ten was knowing that the build-out was going to be, um, more towers that were, um, below the one ninety-nine. If, if the county decided to have a different practice and review that telecommunications, telecommunications plan, at that point, they may actually, um, evaluate whether they'd like to see, um, fewer very large towers, which would have to be handled with the FAA and, and, and be lit, and do bring, um, other levels of responsibility from a local sta- state and federal guideline. I think it's important to remember, too, just the topography and the contour of Buckingham County. We're, we're not in the Midwest in the flatlands. There are many, um, mountains, rolling hills, and also lots of vegetation. Um, you know, the wonderful trees that provide shade and look so beautiful, um, each season that they change. All of those things, and I'm not an engineer either, but they do impact coverage. Um, I do, I know that we probably can't argue that when we're driving through different places. Um, each small, um, step within the build-out plan for the county does increase connectivity. I mean, this is really about connectivity for rural America. It's done in many different forms. Broadband, certainly, and the build-out of proper towers in, in proper places. So, it is, it's, it doesn't all happen in, um, a short period of time. It is a build-out where engineers are constantly assessing and evaluating the growing technology. A lot of the small cell towers that Mr. Parrish spoke of have to deal with 5G technology and above that are placed in more urban areas. Um, that's probably more in a seven-to-ten-year build-out for a rural place such as Buckingham. So, um, we will see many more applications for these one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-feet-in-below towers for a potential build-out for connectivity in Buckingham by way of cell tower communications.
How far off the road is this tower?
Uh, that one is probably approximately about three, four hundred feet. It's fixed back in the cowfield.
Yeah, I, I drove by it. I just didn't know how far away.
Putting trees around it.
Right, and how far from the nearest home?
Probably about, probably a couple football fields.
All right.
It's on the same property. We gotta have a certain falls on it, but she brought, brought up a good point on the one ninety-nine. That's why we did the one ninety-nine tower, 'cause you require a monopole, one ninety-nine. taller tower. Could we cover more? We might be able to. I don't know. We'd have to run a propagation map on that. The RF guy would, you know? But we wanna be friendly to everybody. I know everybody wants service, and you don't wanna see the tower. I'm, I'm with you.
It, the towers, it's over two hundred, if you hit two hundred feet and higher, it's gotta be lit. And we're trying to stay with it. And it's usually lattice, which is a lot-
And I understand it. The only thing that concerns me is I'm looking at this coverage map, and it just, I mean, they're putting one tower up, and the, and the coverage they're getting, if you look at the right-hand, right-hand map, the pink-
It's not as much as you would think.
Yeah, it's sporadic. I mean, I see solid pink in some of these other areas, but over here, it looks to me like you're gonna have to have a half a dozen towers in order to cover that area.
Might be the terrain of the land. I'm not sure. You know, what we got over there, if there's a mountain or something, I'm not sure. But we definitely, I mean, we appreciate y'all listening to us, and we wanna be friendly to the neigh- you know, to the neighbors. We definitely don't wanna make, you know, people-
Right, understandable. Yeah, all right, before you sit down, sir, is there any other question from the commissioners? All right, you can go. I'm gonna open up the public. You go ahead and sit down there. We may bring you back up. With that, I will open up the public comment period for this case. Do we have anyone signing up, Nikki?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have anyone signed up for-
Okay. I will close the public hearing and move it back to the commission and, uh, discuss it, and what is the pleasure of the commission. This, I understand, is questions regarding to the coverage you get here, but, uh, Cityscape- but uh Cityscape, which is the county consultant, you know, looked at this and gave their approval of it, saying it was out of the three sites that were all on fifteen, it was the best for, they got the bills covered. So uh they gave their approval of it and they are our consultants, so. Let's see, uh, any discussion with the commissioners?
I don't even know how to discuss it. I mean, it's just, they're putting up a tower and they're getting, I mean, they're not getting a whole lot of coverage for the tower they're putting up. I mean, are they gonna come to us again next month and say they're gonna need another tower three hundred foot from that tower?
Well, it it's gonna happen, yeah. I don't know how quickly it will happen, but yes. You're gonna have to have more towers to have the the uh framework to then start putting smaller towers in between or on top of, like most of the gentleman was referring to, poles, telephone poles or whatever.
We've got cellar fields. We're gonna have tower fields. I mean, I'm not being facetious, but I'm saying that this gets to be.
Well, I guess it's, you either take that choice and have coverage or you you do without coverage till something else is developed, whenever that.
Or or we find out if there's an alternative in a different area or with a higher tower, unfortunately, that would give us fewer towers and more coverage. I mean, that to me is a question.
That's actually sort of the job of Cityscape or consultant.
The Cityscape is on um, has joined us this evening on Zoom.
Do you have any questions for them, Pete?
Uh, I'm sorry?
They they're available, so, Cityscape or the consultants, if you want to ask them any questions.
Raise your hand. They here?
No, they're on Zoom.
Yeah, I'd ask them whether or not they, I'd ask them.
I'm here, Ben, out of the Cityscape.
Okay, well, then the question I would ask is, did you look at any alternatives, like a height or a different area that would give better coverage?
Well, um, the, the applicant presented uh three di- three possible places where tow- where towers have been either permitted or or exist. And um, you know, co-location, of course, on existing towers is always preferable if if it can be engineered the right way. Um, so we looked at all these towers and uh we analyzed these from the perspective of um what US Cellular uh, what US Cellular's obje- coverage objections, uh objections are, or objectives. And their objective is to uh increase um, um, increase indoor coverage uh in in the nearby towns, in the nearby towns, particularly um uh Shepherds and um Curdsville. And they also uh specified as an area of interest in improvement of of the signal, uh US Highway fifteen, which I believe runs north and south in that particular area. And um, and um, the names, the the road that runs crosswise to it, I believe that's San Francisco Road, is that correct?
Right.
So, so given those objectives that US Cellular has laid out, um, it's it's, they also, they also, I don't know if this was mentioned, but the 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 US Cellular RF engineer also made up a map. Um, it it's in the, it's in the US Cellular uh affidavit. Uh, it's it's a uh, it's a scenario map uh with a red rectangle on it. That's the, that's the particular area. I don't know if you can see that uh in the present, in uh, in, on your screen, or if you could flip to it, I don't, um. But the uh, the the area is particularly uh small. It can, it can be, it should be a mile in diameter, uh. So, you know, relatively small when you, when you uh look at the big picture. Um, this this particular map doesn't have a scale, but but it's, yeah, it's fairly small when when you compare that to the typical footprint of the of the uh, of a cellular tower facility. So given that, there are three uh identified uh permitted, uh per, either permitted sites or existing sites. Two have not been built. They were permitted by Buckingham County, um, but they have not been built for one reason or another. I'm talking particularly um about the um, about the Towercom, uh, proposed Towertown Tower on uh James Madison Highway. And the uh National Communications Towers, the proposed uh site, um, intersection of US fifteen and um State Route six thirty-three. Um, the only one of those three that does exist is the SBA Tower. That's only one point six miles away from the proposed site. The other two sites are three and, three and a half miles away and uh, and two miles away. Now, keeping in mind that US Cellular's objective is to, you know, increase highway coverage in that, in the particular area where the tower is going to go, and also um in um, improve uh indoor coverage in those two, two uh, two towns that I mentioned, Curdsville to the northeast and um, and Shepherds to, just to the south of the proposed site. That's that's where their target is. That's that's their, that's where, that's their target area for improving coverage. And the only uh sites available, or the only site available in that area, uh, is the SBA Tower. Now, we 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 looked at all three uh from the perspective of which one would uh, uh, if any, which one would provide better coverage than the proposed, what the US Cellular is proposing, at the proposed site that they've uh submitted. And uh, our analysis shows that uh none of, none of those three sites will provide uh as good coverage uh as the proposed US Cellular uh facility. And like I said, to those, two of those, those sites, there are, there are no towers. They they don't exist. The only one in the area is one point six miles, miles away, it's the SBA Tower. It's already being used by two other carriers. So the uh, the maximum height that US Cellular could go on that tower would be about a hundred and fifty-five feet, which uh, it's, in my opinion, is not, is not high enough to to provide the coverage that they need. And so that eliminate, pretty much eliminates uh all of those three alternatives, in my estimation. And beyond that, you would have to look at the, the old, existing towers that don't really exist in that area unless you go out uh four, five, six miles. So, I I I think that the, a new tower is the or only alternative for US, you know, that US Cellular.
Thank you. That answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Well, while you're talking about it, I I'd like to ask this. And I've heard over the years that more telephones that we get, instead of having a tower here and another tower five, six miles away, we're gonna have to have them, you know, a half a mile or quarter mile away. Is it anything to that that you know, or you can tell us?
Yes, well, it's it's driven by the industry. Um, back when they're, back in the nineteen eighties, um, you know, there were very good people that owned cell phones. So, the carriers can then just put up a four hundred foot tower, for example, and cover a very large area. Uh, now, any one facility is limited as to how many, how many connections they can handle at any one time. It's, it's a technical uh limitation uh that exists uh even today. You know, what existed then and and it exists now. It's just a limitation. Now, now, when you increase the number of users of uh, of the service to ten times or one hundred times uh the amount of calls, uh, the amount of connection requests that come in, um, you're gonna find that that four hundred foot tower will no longer uh, would no longer do the job because it covers such an a- a wide area where so many people are using cell phones and trying to make calls and uh, you know, you know, get, you know, get a, look at their email or bring up the videos uh or other media on, on their cell phones. But one tower is not gonna do it. So what they have to do is to, is to shrink the area that one tower covers. Um, and that's how we get the towers coming down inside. Because if you have one, if you have towers that are four hundred feet high, it won't work. Uh, you have to, you have to, you have to keep the footprint of each, each site uh at a, at a manageable level where they'll, they'll comfortably uh um service the users of cell phones uh that ex- that exist in the particular area that would service that area. Um, so long story short, you know, your question, your quest, uh, uh, what you've heard is absolutely correct. Uh, the carriers, all the carriers need, these days, need more towers. So that uh, so that they can cover more and more subscribers.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions at this time for Cityscape? Yeah, come on up.
Uh, was that?
Talk, please.
Was that a question for me?
No, I'm not sure.
I wanted to know if you could explain the small cells that are coming to these folks. Like the small cells on the forty-foot telephone poles at Verizon and CRANs and the US Cellular, them are starting to do.
Well, you're gonna need, you know, if you go, if you just try to cover the area using small cells only, uh.
No, no, I was explaining to the, I was explaining to these folks that they're coming, they're gonna be on forty-foot poles. I should think what the gentleman was getting at, is that they were gonna have more towers. I was explaining they're gonna have them on forty-foot telephone poles coming in the future.
That's correct. You'll have one on every block.
Yeah, that's what I was explaining. Is there any, any input you can give them on that?
Well, I I I think that's pretty, pretty much what would happen. Uh, you you'd have uh between all the four uh major carriers, if they all went to um, to small cells, uh, like I said, you'd have, you'd have them on any. You would have, you would have one every
I'm sorry.
Uh, five hundred feet.
It's gonna end up coming what you, what I'm trying to say. See, it's, it's coming. It's gonna be on every corner, like you're saying. You go to the grocery store, you're gonna have one at the food line, the tender section. Go to a drugstore, you're gonna have one at the tender section. They're coming.
Small cells are, small cells are best used in urban areas.
Pardon me?
Where you have a higher concentration of people.
Yep, yep. Anyway, I was just letting.
Now, they.
Thank you.
It doesn't make sense in a rural area like this.
Right. The uh, as the need rises, they'll, they'll be changed. Man drive, the man will drive the number of cell towers and then to fill in gaps on the technology with the smaller ones. But we're right, we're not right at that point yet.
No.
So we have to deal with what we've got now, and that is, we need bigger tires. And we try to spread them out through the county as the need is, to get basic coverage and then hopefully fill in. So that's, that's what we're dealing with at this time, so. Anybody else have any questions? If not, uh, we need a decision.
So if I understand correctly, the farthest red dot south looks to be not too far out of Dillon. There's a pretty substantial gap in coverage, not in coverage, but definitely in in red dots. An antenna or in tower locations between there and the county line down at Prince Edward. For the residents that way, because it doesn't look like there's been any urgency to build any towers that way, I think improvement in that area in any manner would would benefit not only the residents there, but public safety as well. So from our purview as planning commission, I think it's a proper use of land in A1 and it is in line with our comp plan and our telecommunications kind of telecommunications plan as well.
Are you putting that in our motion?
It is. That would be my motion, yes, that we accept Cityscape's recommendation and move this along to the board of supervisors.
Okay. I have a motion to approve his application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes. All right, very good. Thank you, sir. The pass can move into the plant, uh, board of supervisors. All right. Nikki, that brings us to our new business, uh, introduction of Sam Stolzvus.
Mr. Chairman, the next case for introduction is case twenty-three ZTA SGP three twenty-eight. The landowner is Ayman Stolzvus at fifteen fifteen Kyra Road in Cumberland, actually in Buckingham with the Cumberland, Virginia two three zero four zero address. Our applicant is Samuel Stolzvus of the same address. Tax map is one seventy-four parcel two. It does contain approximately eighty-four point seven four acres, as um seen in the attached plat. The zoning district is A1. The applicant wishes to apply for a special use permit to operate a custom meat processing shop and custom slaughterhouse. A meat processing shop is listed in special uses in an A1 zoning district. The custom slaughterhouse request would need to be added to a list of special uses in an A1 agricultural district to evaluate this request. The applicant is asking the planning commission to schedule a public hearing for this request. This business has been and continues to operate in violation of the Buckingham County zoning ordinance as the applicant does not wish to cease operation of his business while seeking a decision of the special use permit request. The applicant has received a visit and inspection by the Virginia Department of Agriculture Enforcement Division and was cited in violation of the state agency regulations and operation standards. This property is zone A1. Currently, a meat processing shop is listed in special uses in an A1 agricultural district and the slaughtering slaughterhouse is not a permitted by right activity or listed in special uses in this district. This application request would ask for the slaughtering or slaughterhouse to be added to a list of special uses in an A1 zoning district by a zoning text amendment and be included in the request for the special use permit. This use may be permitted by the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors by a zoning text amendment and a special use permit following recommendation by the planning commission in accordance with this ordinance and the Code of Virginia. The planning commission may recommend and the board may impose conditions to ensure protections of the district if both the zoning text amendment and the special use permit are approved. The application and narrative are attached and below are conditions you may consider attaching to the request should it be repro- approved or recommended for approval to the board. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, would it be the pleasure of the planning commission to schedule a public hearing for this request? If so, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. And the applicant is present in the audience this evening to address any questions or concerns.
Um, in regards to the violation, you said that that there, would you, you give the details that you told me so that the the commission would have it? The violation was Department of Agriculture?
This case was actually brought in a public comment at the April Board of Supervisors meeting. Um, Lynn Hill went to investigate. Mr. Stolzvus actually came into the office about two days after the complaint um was mentioned during the public commentary period of the April Board of Supervisors meeting. Um, we had conversations in regards to ceasing your activity. You know, this cannot um continue while you're seeking your special use permit. Um, he turned his application in. Towards the end of May, I believe this was, we had um multiple. We had multiple conversations and complaints that he was continuing to operate his business, which he did verify on the phone with me after I was contacted by the Virginia Department of Agriculture, the Enforcement Division. It was Wyatt Locke who contacted me and stated that he, they, their office had received complaints as well, but they were unsure as to where the address was. They did further investigate on the Kyra Road. They cited him for violation. And they will go back to visit Mr. Stolzvus quarterly. I do not have a copy of that violation as I was informed by Virginia Department of Agriculture that it would be three to four weeks before their violation had been finalized. And at that time, I could submit a Freedom of Information Act request to obtain a copy of the violation.
As far as you know, this is not, that, has not been resolved.
No, sir, to my knowledge. And that the visit would have been approximately two weeks ago by the Virginia Department of Agriculture.
And how quickly would they have the letter out?
They said three to four weeks after their visit. It has to be approved by their district manager or supervisor. I'd be able to call back and if it's available, request a copy of it.
And it's, and the question I had to you, the compost pile at this moment, he's, Mr. Stolzvus is held up because we have to make an action for him to get an answer from D E Q and the Health Department.
The way that I understand, the compost pile is explained by the Virginia Department of Agriculture. That would not necessarily be approved under their purview depending upon how the waste materials and inedibles are handled. It may also involve the Virginia Health Department along with D E Q, but there were other variables in regards to the blood products and inedibles and everything that culminates into the waste products of the animals.
So we don't have an answer on that either at this point.
No, sir.
I won't put it to the commission. We've got, we've got two outstanding things here that we don't have an answer for. Mr. Stolzvus, if you would come up front, I'm gonna explain what, what I suggest to you, but I'm gonna make, let you make your own decision, sir. Let me first say I appreciate you trying to get in compliance with the county. Because you've got this outstanding violation and we don't have an answer yet on the, on the health issue with the compost pile, I'll give you your option. You can, we'll go ahead and open this up and talk about it, the commission here. Or we can table it until you get an answer or at least from Nikki gets the paperwork from the Agriculture Department and resolve that issue with the Agriculture Department. Be honest with you, if we were to hear this case now, I don't know that, I can't speak for the other commissioners, but this commission really wouldn't be doing their due diligence to move it on knowing that's a violation. So I'm, suspect what would happen is you would get denied. So I'm gonna give you your choice. Do you wanna go ahead and have the hearing? Or would you agree to just table this until you get your violation resolved?
So if I would agree with just going ahead with the hearing, I would have another month to get my violation resolved? Or would you want that resolved before you agree to?
I cannot speak for the whole commission, but I would say we would, I would think it'd probably be the consensus of this commission. We'd like to see that resolved, the violation.
Before you?
Before we discuss it and either turn it down or move it forward to the public hearing. But now, I'm, I'm giving you your option, but I just, I just want you to be aware of what may happen. Because that's outstanding, it's hard for this commission to consider doing their due diligence and we don't know what that is and it's not been resolved.
So it would be just table and then next month we'd?
Next month, if you were, if you were to get a resolution on the, that violation, then you let Nikki know and it will come before.
Right, it'd be another introduction and then a public hearing a month later.
Correct. It'll at least be heard, so, but you need to let her know first. Is that what you choose to do?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. That's, we will be tabling this until you resolve the issue with the violation. And you let Nikki, yes, sir.
Quick question from Mr. Stolzvus. Do you intend to continue operations while this thing is tabled? So you will not be doing any slaughterhouse work at all?
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, that brings us to our Blue Rock Solar. Nikki?
Yes, sir. The next case is twenty-three S U P three twenty-nine. For introduction, the landowners are Blue Rock Resources LLC and J A M N Limited Partnership LLP. The applicant this evening is Blue Rock Solar LLC, R W E Clean Energy. The tax maps in this request are two zero two parcel seventy containing approximately seven hundred and ninety-six point six seven acres. Tax map two oh seven parcel forty-one containing approximately one hundred and eight and tax map two oh seven parcel forty containing approximately one hundred ninety-two point ninety-one acres. The parcels are located near the intersection of State Route six eighty-three, which is Moholy Road, and State Route six thirty-six Stagecoach Road in the Mag, Curtisville Magisterial District. Zoning district is A1 and the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit to allow for the construction and operation of a solar photovoltaic PV models to produce up to one hundred megawatt utility scale solar facility on approximately eleven hundred twenty-seven acres in Buckingham County. The power generated will be linked to the electrical transmission grid via the existing overhead one fifteen K V high voltage onsite transmission line. The applicant is asking the planning commission to schedule a public hearing for this request. Of course, the zoning ordinance does not permit a public utility generating plan as, as a permitted use. However, within the A1 agricultural district, public utility generating plants, public utility booster or relay stations, transformers, substations, meters and other facilities, including railroads and facilities, and water and sewage facilities may be permitted by the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors by a special use permit following recommendation by the planning commission in accordance with the ordinance and the Code of Virginia. The planning commission may recommend and the board may impose conditions to ensure protection of the district if the special use permit is approved. Blue Rock Solar, the applicant or Blue Rock Solar, request a special use permit to allow for the construction and operation of a one hundred megawatt utility scale solar facility on the property as mentioned, one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven acres of private land. The project is being developed by R W E Clean Energy, a subsidiary of R W E Group, the third largest renewable energy company in the United States and the country's second largest solar owner and operator. With more than fifteen years in the U.S. renewables business, R W E has a proven track record in developing, constructing and operating renewable energy facilities. R W E Clean Energy's strong position in renewable energy is a result of combining R W E Renewables Americas with Con Edison Clean Energy Businesses acquired by R W E in March of twenty twenty-three. R W E Clean Energy operates a renewable energy portfolio of about eight gigawatts installed capacity of onshore wind, solar and battery storage. The fifteen hundred R W E team in the U.S. is fully committed to being a leader in the clean energy transition in North America. As part of the R W E Group's growing green strategy to expand its green portfolio globally to more than fifty gigawatts of install capacity and to invest globally more than fifty-five billion gross by twenty thirty, R W E Clean Energy is determined to significantly increase its operating asset base in the U.S. This is backed by a project pipeline of more than twenty-four gigawatts in onshore wind, solar and battery storage, which provides for one of the largest development platforms in the United States. There are conditions attached to, twenty-eight conditions attached to the special use permit request. Would it be the pleasure of the planning commission to hold a public hearing for this request? If so, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. I'd also like to add that the applicant is available in the audience this evening with a presentation and to address any, and address and answer any questions or concerns you may have.
Okay, thank you, Nikki. Mr. Greenelia, you wanna come up to the podium, please? Would you just give us a quick overlay and then we'll go into your presentation if that's satisfactory, sir?
Sure. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Overdue, do you want me to start on the, the project? I think Nikki did a fantastic job.
Hit some highlights other than that, or you can go right on to, I'm sorry.
Are you able to hear the meeting well this evening?
What did you say?
I was just making sure everyone could hear well, the presentation.
Yes, I guess. Anyway, everybody here?
We can jump right into the presentation.
If you want to just go to your presentation, that's fine. We'll be having some questions after that.
Do you want to go to slide three? So as, as Nikki mentioned, I mean, ultimately, we're, we're seeking a, a recommendation of approval from the planning commission and hopefully to move this forward to the Board of Supervisors. I think we've, you know, we've put together a pretty solid application that we believe aligns with the Buckingham County Comprehensive Use Plan and ultimately are, are looking to get the special use permit approval. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, the project's a hundred megawatt PV facility. We began development on this back in twenty eighteen, so it's been a while in the making. I know you guys have seen quite a few projects that have come forward before the county. I think when you look at all the projects that have been proposed, electrically at least, this one is, is one of the most advanced and has probably the highest likelihood of being built from an economic standpoint. The, the project is, you know, in a unique location. It, it borders the, the county line with Cumberland County, so we actually have thirty-five acres that fall into Cumberland County. We will be seeking a, a similar conditional use process with Cumberland County for that, that acreage. It's essentially three landowners as mentioned. We're at eleven hundred twenty-seven point two acres, I believe. Under panel, it's under seven hundred acres. The, the project, we put some unique components into the design specific to address wetland buffers, view shed buffers, wildlife corridors. I think when you look at the array blocks on the next slide, each individual array block, I think we're roughly two dozen, I believe there's twenty-two different array blocks, all with independent corridors that run throughout. The, the project is really in a unique spot where it's flat comparatively. I know we talked about with your presentation on the cell towers, the topography within the county of Buckingham. Pretty rough from what you would expect for an ideal solar facility. This area in particular is, one, it's isolated from, you know, multiple residents. I think we're, we're looking at, your guys' ordinance has a three hundred and fifty foot minimum buffer from a residence. I think we're closer to eight hundred from an existing residence or neighboring residence. We've got no schools, churches, really, thing from a recreational perspective in close proximity to the project site. Only frontage road is Stagecoach Road that runs on the north boundary of the project. The current use of the property is commercial timber and cultivated ag. The intent of R W E would be to maintain existing vegetative buffers in addition to planted vegetative buffers, essentially making it completely hidden from the public. And then at the, under the, so I guess one step back, so we've got three different parcels that we are occupying currently. The majority of it is leased with the exception of the J A M N LLP property, which is a purchase. So one hundred ninety-four acres will be purchased and then the substation area will be purchased. That substation area will then be deeded over to Dominion. The vast majority of the project will be under lease. Under our leasehold obligations, we have a bonded right to restore the property at the end of the project life. I think we are open to naming the county as a secondary party on that decommissioning bonding requirement. Next slide, please. This shows the wildlife corridors. So some of the unique designs or the incorporations into the design, as mentioned, were almost two dozen different ray blocks which would allow for vegetative or the wildlife corridors. Next slide, please. We can skip these. Nikki covered these. So I think the next three slides cover R W E and then the, the merger that was closed in March. Effectively, the, the business is to own and operate, so we are an independent utility or independent power producer. Third largest in North America, second largest in solar, I think fourth largest in wind. And then back to the project timeline. So as I mentioned, the single largest gating item for solar in any state in the U.S. is interconnection. Interconnection has to be economically viable to support a project. This project, based on where it's at in the PJM and Dominion interconnection process, has the ability to come online in twenty twenty-six, which I don't think any of the other previous applications, with the exception of maybe the, the Apex Project, can, can represent that accurately. So we've got, as shown here, essentially the, you know, this is under the assumption that we would get a approval for the special use permit in Q four of this year and what that timeline would look like. So we'd have the bulk of the remaining studies for, the state permit by rule process would commence in Q four. And then we would run through the, the permit by rule process with the state D E Q through next year with breaking ground in twenty twenty-five and regional operation in twenty twenty-six. That's a, you know, a fairly conservative timeline. It takes into account the timing that would be required for Dominion to build that substation, which is twenty-four months, assuming that they can actually stay on schedule. Next slide. And then just, just running through some, some key items for conformance with your guys' solar siting guidance. And so I think if you guys have had time to review the application, I think we've taken most of the conditions that have been, you know, previously stipulated to other projects into consideration. We've got, as I mentioned, the setbacks from existing dwellings. You guys have three hundred and fifty feet in there, as I mentioned earlier. I think from the nearest residence to panel, we're approximately eight hundred feet and the exact distance is stated within the application. Setback from property lines, I think you, you guys have put a fifty foot buffer from adjacent property lines. We are, the, the project is within compliance with that from a right of way, a seventy-five foot buffer from any adjoining public right of way. All of that has been incorporated in the existing design, the layout that was previously shown on the screen and is also in the application. From perennial streams and wetlands, a fifty foot buffer. We understand there's been, you know, a lot of sensitivity within the state of Virginia on impacts to waterways in particular. I think if you look at the project site, you know, comparatively some other, to some other applications that have been submitted to the county, you know, we've got no significant waterways. And again, the topology, which is one of the main reasons why we selected the site, being that it's flat, we anticipate, you know, zero impact to, to water runoff. There was a question in previous meetings with, with staff and, and the commissioners about any blue line streams. I think we've got one blue line stream that runs through the northwest portion diagonally across the project. As far as buffer, I think we've, we've included a fifty foot buffer. We would be open to additional feedback from the commission if, if that continues to be a sensitive. Buffers, main thing we hear, I've been doing this since oh six across the entire nation, is view shed. View shed's always a huge issue. I think, you know, I had mentioned it already once, we've got a single frontage road on this project. It's all planted pine right now for the most part against that frontage road. We'd anticipate, and I think we've even put in there a tree stand map for you guys to see the age of that existing timber. We'd expect to retain a portion of that and then build in additional vegetative buffers per the solar siding guidance. Next slide, please. Traffic and road use, within the application, we've included a Traffic and road use. Within the application, we've included a traffic study on this. One of the things I mentioned earlier is we've got no schools or churches within close proximity along Stagecoach Road. So, we, and again, it's, you know, going east on Stagecoach, it runs up against the county line. So, from a school bus impact, you know, we have the expectation that there's zero impact during operations. The construction, traffic, that was addressed. If you guys have additional questions, we can follow up with the specific subject matter experts that put that together. Economic and fiscal impact, I think there's a couple of things when we look at this. We anticipate that as a requirement for the SUP, that we would enter into a siting agreement with the county. The revenue share on this via the state statute is roughly $1,400 a megawatt. That's supposed to increase five, or 10% every five years. So, by the time this project goes into commercial operation, we would have passed 2025, which means that that 1,400 shown on the screen is actually 1,540, I believe, if my math's correct. In addition to that, a change in the tax revenue from ag to industrial also will boost revenue for the county. Topology or topography, I think we've addressed that. Again, comparatively to the rest of the county, very flat area. Shed, I think I beat that one up as well. Next slide, please. Land use, so preserve the rural character, nature, natural beauty, and historic setting. As I mentioned, we're not in any historic view shed recreational area, and believe that there will be no impact to surrounding properties. We've personally met with all of the adjoining neighbors that live on Stagecoach Road to make them aware of the project and allow them to voice concerns on it. It would be our intent before a public hearing to also have a town hall meeting and invite the public. To keep out of businesses that pollute or damage the environment. I think you guys have heard enough, solar doesn't make any noise, doesn't pollute. We, as a company, do not use first solar modules, which are made with cadmium telluride. We use the standard photovoltaic modules, which is essentially compressed sand and silicon. There's no toxic materials in it. It is essentially aluminum and glass and silicon. So, again, I think we feel that it's in accord with the comprehensive plan as far as keeping out businesses that would pollute or damage the environment. And then as far as community design, you know, this project is set to drive millions of dollars in tax revenue for the county that can be used for schools, roads, fire departments, first responders, or recreational facilities. Next. Cultural resources, so we performed a cultural phase 1A on the project. There is no known or deemed of possible significance. Cultural resources identified within the entire 1,127.2 acres. Economic development, you know, this project during construction will create 200 to 300 jobs. There is an economic benefit analysis that has been supplied as part of the SUP application. Post-construction, 2 to 4 full-time jobs. The revenue share, tax benefits, I think, have also been discussed. All of that is within the economic impact report, which was submitted as part of the SUP application. Environment, the project, you know, as I mentioned, we don't anticipate any adverse environmental impacts as far as impacts to soil or water. The project obviously will have to go through DEQ for stormwater management. In the design and the layout that was incorporated earlier, there are, I believe they are red or slightly pinkish squares that follow around all of those blue array blocks. Those are all permanent stormwater basins that have been incorporated into our 10% civil design. And again, we anticipate, you know, staying within full compliance with DEQ. Slide, please. So, fire rescue, law enforcement. So, you know, we anticipate that there will be no additional stress put on public services. What we propose with the county as a requirement with the SUP is dedicated training that we would perform with all first responders, fire, and police staff. The parks and open spaces, you know, we've talked about this, and, you know, it's shown within the SUP application. It will have no impacts to parks. It's not located within any view shed of any parks or open spaces. And frankly, we believe with the existing vegetation that's on site and the fact that we've only got a single frontage road, that it's, you know, will be a great neighbor and visible to the public. Potable water, I think the main item here is the leaching of any chemicals and the fact that we, we don't expect any water pollution on the project site, so. The telecommunications, we're going to install fiber to monitor the project. That's as a requirement with Dominion, so we anticipate no additional strain to the county for that. In addition, as an owner-operator in a utility, as our primary business, we've got a 24/7 operations facility that operates out of Texas. As far as how it's maintained locally, you know, we do have four projects that are either in construction or operation in the state of Virginia, and we do anticipate 2 to 4 full-time employees dedicated to this project going forward, so. Transportation, I would defer to the traffic study that was submitted for the SUP application. But in addition to that, you know, I think I've talked about it, we're on the county line. As far as traffic that comes post-construction, there's, you know, no anticipated impact to the community and your constituents. I think lastly, as far as an additional item that we would request or be willing to agree to as part of the SUP application, is a road use agreement with bonded protection to the county to repair any damages that may have been caused during construction. Solid waste, you know, the product that we are using, the polysilicon modules, 90% of those semiconductor materials and the glass and aluminum's all recyclable. So, it's anticipated at the end of the useful life of the project, which is 40 years, that those materials can be recycled. The last items we have for you are some visual simulations that we put together. Slide, please. And so, these are also within the, within the SUP application. I think the importance of some of these images are, with the exception of the driveway into where the proposed access points are on the project, those are also shown on the SUP application and layout. It's anticipated there's zero impact from a view shed perspective, with the exception of that one driveway off Stagecoach Road. Again, it's, we do anticipate, you know, vegetative buffer requirement for that. And so, over time, as that grows and matures, we believe that it will be fully blocked from public view. Slide. And so, essentially, these are, these images are going east along Stagecoach Road, looking south towards the project site. This is that one driveway that I mentioned, that will be visible and will not have both the existing pine and the planted buffer. But as you can see, I think on the next slide, we show it at 10 years, what it looks like as it grows out. So, again, you know, we believe we can be a great neighbor, be invisible to the public. Sixty and seen, one of your guys' first projects, and our goal's to not be that project. And then moving further down the road, it gets, you know, because of the existing buffer and the proposed planet buffers along Stagecoach, it gets denser and denser with less visibility. I think we've got one more. That culminates our presentation today.
Mr. McNeely, question from the commission.
Please. I drove both roads, Moheale and 636 both. Where's your access? Is it up 636 or up Moheale Road?
So, we, I believe, within the SUP application on the layout, if you go back to the layout, so there will be two proposed access roads. One from the south, and then one on the, along Stagecoach Road to the northwest portion of the project site.
You're going to have them on both ends.
There's going to be one from the south, one from the north, correct.
Right. Okay, when I was up Moheale Road, I just happened to notice, and it's a nice flat area, it was interesting. Lot of sweet gum trees, so there's wetland. And I noticed in your application, you delineated at least 100 acres. Is there any more wetland, and if so, what do you intend to do? I mean, I don't know exactly how runoff affects the wetland area in this. I mean, it looks like there's a lot of wetland over there.
So, as you can see, within this, so the entire property has been delineated. It has, that has been submitted to the US Army Corps of Engineers for an AJD. You know, our practice and the best practice that we adhere to is avoidance for all wetland to the extent as possible. So, the only, only times that we impact wetlands would be for coal crossing, so for road crossings, essentially, which would be a permitted use with the Army Corps of Engineers. We'd have to go through that process and file that permit with them, as far as...
So, with regard to where the wetland is located in this area?
We are, we have incorporated 50-foot buffers off every wetland for all the array blocks.
What about your holding ponds? I mean, how are they affected?
They're all incorporated into the design for the topology and around the buffers. We can have a, a group that put that together, which is Timmons Group. They did the civil design on that. I'm not a civil engineer, but we can address how that was incorporated into the existing design.
I mean, that seems to be one of the big questions that everybody asks about these panels and the runoff. I'm kind of interested in finding out exactly how these holding ponds are going to hold up, given the fact that you're, you do have some wetland here to be concerned about.
Sure.
So, maybe that would be something interesting at your, at your public hearing, if we get that far.
Yeah.
Second question I'd ask you is, who is the owner? Who will ultimately own this?
RW, RWE?
RWE, so this is not going to be assigned to...
So, our business, so if you look back at the narrative that was in the SUP application that Nikki read, so our business is to own and operate renewables.
Okay.
If you look at the business historically, it's a utility. We've owned everything as far as all fuel types, so everything from nuclear to coal to natural gas.
So, any of the liabilities reside with RWE?
Correct.
And then can you explain this particular map to me? I don't understand what these shades are.
I don't have a map set in front of me. Do you mind?
Yeah. Okay, well, I just don't know what it was. Is that topography, or is that what that is? So, it's elevation, is that what we're looking at?
That's my understanding. Valley that runs right in this area. I'm assuming that's what it is.
Okay, and have the neighbors been canvassed, the people that you say you're going to be bordering?
So, have been, we've done outreach for all of them.
Good. Did you say that you were going to be 800-foot, even though your buffer requirement's only 350-foot from the nearest residence, you're going to be 800 feet from the nearest residence?
Correct. So, it's hard to see on this image. This map set is also in the SUP application, so every circle you see there is a resident dwelling.
Okay.
Essentially, one of the main things that attract us to the site, other than, you know, access to transmission, we've got a transmission line that runs directly through the property. The topology, when you look at the rest of Buckingham County, is, you know, significantly flatter. The third thing that attracts us to it is the lack of residences in close proximity to it.
Right.
I believe there is a map set that shows the exact distance. I believe it's like 790 feet from the closest residence. That should be in the map set within the SUP application.
That's respectful. I'm wondering whether or not you'd be willing to put that in as a condition. I don't know if it's a requirement or not, but...
I think, let me verify the exact distance, but it would be something that we would be open to considering.
Nikki, in your estimation, in this area, is there anything scheduled for neighborhood development or any other future development around this place?
I currently don't have any cases, or I've had, nor have I had any pre-application meetings at this point for anything in that area, but each day is a new day.
Thank you.
Mr. McNeely, where is the substation on this going to go, project?
Yeah, so this, so as I mentioned, the transmission line, the Dominion line runs north to south. It makes a slight turn on this project map set. It's hard to see here. This is the line. There's a shaded area on the north side that is basically hashed out pink. That is the proposed project substation area. For all projects, all generating projects for renewables, there's essentially two substations. So, there is a smaller, what they call collection or PV plant substation. Generally, those are co-located near your switching station, which is the one that will be owned by Dominion. So, they will be co-located. Our substation, roughly a 200-by-200-foot pad. The Dominion substation, being at the 115 KV voltage, will be roughly a 400-by-400-foot path. I would say the one, the one item that may change on this is an additional access road that Dominion may require. You know, from previous projects that we've done in Virginia, Dominion historically asked for their own independent access into the substation, that it not to be shared with any other counterparty.
And there is no battery storage, correct?
No. We do have, just for full transparency, we do have an interconnection application that has been submitted for battery storage, but that is not part of our application nor our intent for what we're seeking. We are seeking just the solar PV.
Just wanted to clarify that, so. Any other questions from the commissioners? Well, appreciate your presentation, Mr. McNeely. I see in the narrative, you have your community meeting scheduled for July, I think the 12th, was it somewhere in that area? Okay. Right. Well, even though it's not our exact policy, it just sort of been the way we've operated, is to have that community meeting, have that first, and then come back to the commission. And I would think the commissioners feel like that they need some additional time. There's a lot of information here to digest. Rather than moving this to public hearing or deciding on that, is to, they're going to have the meeting in July, is to come back in August and then discuss it more. We can understand what the community meeting, how that went, and you'll have time to read over all the information and maybe have additional questions that would you prefer to do?
What about the Cumberland part? Do you have to have another meeting with Cumberland?
So, we...
To get approval?
Correct. So, as I mentioned, so there's roughly 35 acres that fall into Cumberland County. We've met with staff, and we are in the process of preparing the application, which would be, you know, vastly similar to the one that we submitted for you guys. It's our intent to have that ready for submission in the next, maybe soon. But we are seeking that in parallel, correct?
Yeah, I don't want to say I'm proven what's on this map. It shows us going and coming.
I think the county attorneys have been in communication as well. So, we did meet with staff, as mentioned, with both Cumberland County and Buckingham County staff. And I am aware that the attorneys have spoken, at least on more than one occasion.
Cumberland approval, impact, this project's willingness to move forward?
No, not necessarily. So, under, ultimately, under the interconnection requirements with PJM and Dominion, we can build at a smaller system size than what we've requested. I think from an economic standpoint, you know, the project with the loss of only 31 acres is still financially viable. So, we would still move forward regardless.
And if that were to happen, it wouldn't affect your land in Buckingham? It would just be the reduction in the generation of the power, correct?
Yeah, correct, yeah. And our, and that portion of land is with the majority land... Yeah, correct. Yeah. And our, and, and that portion of land is with the majority landowner on our project, that's leased, and we have the ability to release portions of that lease.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. McNeely. You can sit down. We have to discuss, you, uh, does the commission wanna do this? Do they wanna wait, as I suggested, till August? Well, they're not having a meeting until July, their community meeting. Uh, it, nor what we've done before is we gave time for everybody to read all the information and maybe come up with some more questions, but now I'm, I'm throwing it out there for whatever the commission majority would like to do.
Postponed our, or canceled our July work session, would that give us the opportunity to discuss internally, maybe at the August work session? Solar in general, and the status of our ordinance?
We could. I guess it would hinge on how much time we would need for the comprehensive plan, is whether we would have, you know, whatever time. We could certainly do it.
Most of my questions are centered internally, not necessarily for RWE, but about where we are with our solar ordinance, and if that's official, and if we're using that as a guide at this point, so.
But I was wondering too.
Well, if that's the case, then do you, you want?
I think, I think August would make the most sense.
Okay. Is that the consensus of the commission? We'll come back in August?
That would make more sense to me, because they have to set up their community meeting.
Right.
Get that resolved, and this is already the end of June.
Well, they're gonna try in July, but I don't know if they'll have it in time for us to get any feedback before July. Right. Yeah, you ne- you never know, so.
So, um, August.
Uh, what's the other feeling of the commissioners' head? Census? All right. Mr. McNeely, you understand we're gonna basically not make a decision like, we're gonna let you have the, uh, community meeting in July, if you possibly can pull that off. We will come back in our August meeting, and then we will ask more questions, and then move forward from that point, either, you know, deny or move you on to a public hearing. So, we're all pushing you back one month, but it gives us time to, uh, digest all this information you've given, and say and get the responses from the community, so. Okay. I appreciate that, sir.
Chairman, I do have a question. Are we scheduling a public hearing for the August regular meeting?
No, ma'am. We're coming back, ask more questions, and then that meeting will either move it, deny or move it forward to a public hearing.
So we will not include this application on the agenda at all for the month of July?
No, because they're in the process of trying to get the, uh, the committee, commit, the community meeting. I'll get it out in a minute.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. All right. That will bring us to our last case, which is the Cellular Axtel Tower.
Sorry, can you just? Yes, sir. The next case for introduction is twenty-three S U P three thirty. Um, the landowner's M Three Properties Incorporated. Their office is located at thirty-two ninety-four Doctor's Crossing in Charlottesville, Virginia. And the applicant, again, is US Cellular. The agent is Emily Lauer. She is unavailable to join us, but we do have Mr. Parrish in the back to answer questions and concerns. This tax map is fourteen, parcel fifty-nine. It does contain approximately forty-four point ninety-eight acres, and it's located at twenty-four sixty-two Axtel Road, Scottsville, Virginia, two four five nine oh, in the Slate River District. The zoning district is A one, and their request is to obtain a special use for, permit for the purpose of constructing a one hundred and ninety-nine foot monopole communications tower. The applicant is asking the planning commission to schedule a public hearing for this request, and once again, this case represents something that the zoning ordinance does not permit. A communications tower as a permitted use, however, within the A one agricultural district radio stations, television stations, and cable TV facilities, communication station, and or tower-related facilities in accordance with Article Nine of this ordinance may be permitted by the Buckham County Board of Supervisors by a special use permit. Following recommendation by the planning commission in accordance with this ordinance and the Code of Virginia. The planning commission may recommend, and the board may impose conditions to ensure protection of the district if the special use permit is approved. Cityscape, as the wireless telecommunications expert for the county of Buckingham, concludes that there is a preponderance of evidence that construction of a new personal wireless communications facility in the vicinity of the proposed site is technically justified and is essential for the applicant to achieve its objective of seamless service in the county. Furthermore, given the rolling nature of the terrain in the county, which presents challenges to personal wireless transmission and reception, Cityscape believes the location and height proposed are technically appropriate. The choice of the monopole's color is at the discretion of the county. Therefore, Cityscape recommends approval of a new wireless facility with US Cellular as an anchor tenant at the proposed location and tower height of one hundred ninety-nine feet. Applicant US Cellular, Cellular and agent Emily Lauer explains this project within the submitted narrative and all submitted application documents. There are fifteen conditions attached to this special use permit request. Those do reflect the recommendations by Cityscape, the consultant for the county. Uh, would it be the pleasure of the planning commission to schedule a public hearing July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, six P M? And of course, Mr. Parrish is in the audience, I believe.
One quick question before I ask him to come down. Um, where do we stand with the tower that was approved, like, close to Howardsville off of six oh two, Howardsville Road?
That's under construction.
It is under construction. Okay, great.
This would probably be located, gosh, under three miles, under two miles from this, and this would be part of a, a larger build out for that reception and to connect the dots within the, the plan.
Yeah, I was hoping that, uh, what I could tell, it looked like it would be, uh, to be able to overlap enough to keep the service up, so. All right, um, Mr. Parrish? Yes, yes, sir. If you'd like, come forward. Can you just, uh, give us a quick overlay introduction?
Yeah, this is just another, uh, one ninety-nine monopole tower on Axtel Row, uh, road for service. It's in a pine thicket. There's pine trees with a road cutting, and the man uses it for storage blocks and brick for his business. That's where we're putting the tower. I got, do you, uh, did, I got some drawings in, in notebook here, if I'm gonna pass them around.
I think they might be in the packet.
Yeah, they're not in the packet, are they?
They were just trying to improve coverage to another capacity site.
Is there another, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, ma'am?
Yes, go ahead.
Is there another pink map like the one you showed before, where we can determine? Yeah, I think, I think those things are necessary when we talk to these, you know, about these cell towers, 'cause I, I tell you again, I was out at that area, all right, and I can tell you, there isn't anything out that area. So quite frankly, I mean, underneath, I think, not, not a bad idea, but I don't know where the other cell towers are, and I don't know what the coverage is. And I, and I don't know exactly where they stand in respect to the roads, so if we could get some kind of a map.
I got one. Yeah, they got them in here. Yeah, I told you, it's a map, yeah, yeah. That's the one, Danny.
All right, thank you.
I, I just feel, like I said, I'm.
Page four thirty-eight.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, this one got a bottom map, and then the rest of them. It's four thirty-eight, and it shows before and after map.
Oh, is this one got it too?
It's in the affidavit from US Cellular.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't know she had already said all that. I would show the roads better.
I think that shows a better than one, the other one.
That.
Much better, is it?
It is.
Little bit.
It's better, yes.
Might have been a different RF engineer.
It's better, um, but I'm very familiar with that area.
The only negative I've got here is, is, it's got the same signature from the, uh, VDOT people again.
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah.
And that, that run over a long time ago, so it's, it don't, we need to go back to VDOT and get it back.
Yeah, I'll get you, make sure we update permits. A lot of what they're doing is like, line of sight, so when we come out.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Uh, in this document, you've got the same, you've got the identical document. Both presentations. Uh, the one about the, um, the endangered species, about the monarch butterflies and the long-eared, that's, it is the sa- it is dated the same. It references the same, that, no, the same animals. Oh, the same address, yes, because it speaks to the document that you have in this Axtel, um, cell tower. Says Francisco Road, so it is, it is the same document in that, so I wanna see what's specific to the Axtel Road, yes.
Our consultant group to do the, I'll get with them and make sure.
Well, they just stuck in a letter
Right.
that they had, which just happened to be in the same.
Copy, that's what I do.
Right, and just stuck in.
Yeah, I understand. You wanna know what to, like.
I wanted something specific to Axtel.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I do know this area, and this is a better, um, coverage area.
Pine trees right where we're, right across from the church on Ax.
It's across from Goshen Church, yeah. Okay, yeah, and I, I know where it is. I know the little side road down there, and there's some folks that live down there. And Salem Church down the road is the church that I attend, so I know that road very well, so.
I'll get you what you need.
All right. This is a better map because I happen to know the area really well, but what we need is something that actually shows the streets. Somebody else may not know the roads. Plus the coverage.
Mr. Parrish, um, would you stay close to the microphone? We're not able to pick up anything you're saying, and we probably need that for the minutes.
I was just telling her I'd get her a better map showing the roads and stuff.
Okay, thank you so much.
Anything else that y'all would need?
You say that, the application was still, still the same as the other one?
The application?
Yeah, it says Francisco Road.
It says Francisco Road, right, the date is the same.
So you got, you got one application taking care of both.
They did.
Didn't change the name on it?
They didn't change the name or anything on it, no.
It's the exact same thing on both of them?
The same date also.
I'll put a note to that. Application's same for both.
That, that environmental.
Even the people that live around it.
Right, the act, the date is, it's the same letter.
That T U P on there. It says A T U P on there.
What is it, Danny? You got it up?
Um, application for a special use permit, you know, and if you notice, right there, and he has talking about Francisco Road.
Oh.
Talking about the same.
No, I wasn't talking.
Right, it's, it's, to me, they just took the same permit and slid it down to this one. He even made signature from that person from Lynchburg, which. Right, yeah, he needs to redo the application.
What?
Or find out which one would.
Mrs. Jeff.
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Nikki, do, you don't know if that's a different one somewhere else, do you?
After much communication with the applicant, and from many requests, this is what she has sent. Um, there was, um, information requested and sent to Cityscape. This application is for, um, the Axtel Road address. I'm sure she had some confusion in submitting the documents, and I'm not sure if it was a case of copy and paste. And many requests for many different documents, but here we are. I will ensure with Mr. Parrish, um, that he update, um, the documents that are needed, and maybe a victim of cut and paste from the Holland Road application.
Mr. Chairman.
He'll clean that up for you.
I'm not referring, he's referring to another document that was cut and paste. I'm referring to the United States Department of Interior Fish and Wildlife Service.
Yeah, that's with D T U P on that one.
It's the, um. Uh, it doesn't say that, it just says, it's, uh, but the date is the same. The wildlife, right, from the United States Department of the Interior. This is the, it's the same document, same date, absolutely the same document, same date.
Sent both the wrong ones.
Well, we need one for Axtel Road.
Right. Yeah, and the same thing, the one I was looking at, the same thing, it doesn't, it's still talking about Farmville.
Axtel, Farmville, right.
It's the number Axtel Road.
I'll get it over to her.
We ain't gonna be on hold until we get all this.
We need to hold it. I would recommend holding that.
Fine, if that's what the commission would like to do, uh, it's, it's, it's our, whatever, the majority. If you wanna hold it, hold this one until then, or can you have all this information to the, by next month?
Yes, sir, yep.
Propagation maps and all?
Yes, sir.
That's good and necessary.
Yes, sir, yep.
Well, that's up to you now. We can either postpone it, or if he doesn't have the information by, by next month's meeting, then we just table it then, or till he gets it to us. Or we can go ahead and just say we're not, we're gonna table it. Yet, that's, that's a choice, whichever you prefer to do.
I can get this emailed to her tomorrow as quick as I can get it.
Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just prefer to see the applications filled out correctly, so we don't have, we have the wrong names.
Right, I understand perfectly.
Yeah, so.
Do you want to postpone, or go ahead and knowing he will have that for us at the next meeting, if we move it to public hearing, and if he doesn't, then we, we table it at that point till we do get it? Or would you prefer to have it first before you move it to public hearing? That's, that's a question.
I would prefer to have the information. I don't know what the consensus of the rest of the board, but I would just prefer to have the information.
Correct, before we move it.
Correct, before I, right, and especially since we asked, or I asked for.
Specifics.
For it the last time.
The propagation maps.
For the propagation maps, and we're still at that same point.
We got a bottom one for this, this, this town that we did the one over on Farmville.
But we're still at that same point, so.
Right, right. All right, well, let's just, if that's the consensus, we'll table it, and you get the information to us, sir, and then we'll, uh, meet in, uh, July.
Okay.
And.
And that's fact.
We'll review the information, ask the questions at that point, and then if we do, uh, it's been recommended by our, our consultant, Cityscape, to move it on forward. Uh, but we'll, we're gonna table till you get the information, and then we'll have that in, uh, July.
Okay. And then, in July, would that be, uh, tabled? Would that be the introduction, or would that be the vote?
It'll be a continuation of the introduction. At that meeting, if you've got all your information together and everything, and the satisfaction, to the satisfaction of the commissioners here that have asked for it, then we'll discuss it, and, you know, then there'll be a vote to move it toward public hearing, which will occur in August.
Yes, sir.
If, if we move it forward.
That sounds good. Okay, thank you all.
Before we sit down, is any other information that you want us to ask at this point, or, all right, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
I've got notes for her better roads, showing the roads and the propagation maps in the, the federal letter of wild dangers and species.
Yeah.
The right application.
Right, and also, we gotta get, Danny Wood, uh, the Highway Department application?
Oh, yes, sir, I got that.
Make sure you got that, right.
That's for both of them.
That's for both of them, right.
For both sites.
Right.
Yes, sir, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Yeah, and, and a better picture for the first site.
All right, that, uh. That brings us, Nikki, to your reports.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything add, to add, um, as zoning administrator.
Okay.
I do have one question.
Yes.
We will have a, um, going back to the Axtel case, we will have them as an introduction continuation in July, on the twenty-fourth.
In July, and a decision at that point will be made. If he is, they have got all their in, uh, information together, the application is brought up to date.
We'll evaluate.
We'll evaluate at that time and either move it forward, or whatever we need to do. But it'll be the decision then to move it, if public hearing will be in August.
Okay, and then backing up just a bit, just to make sure that I have all of the cases straight, um, so the Blue Rock Solar will come back for a continuation to their introduction in August.
In August, right.
And then, um, the Stolzfuss case, um, the applicant elected to.
That's tabled until he brings you information and that violation has been corrected, resolved, whatever.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commission matters are concerned. Any commissioners have anything they wanna enforce?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question, two questions, actually. Number one, uh, with regard.
I have a question, two questions, actually. Number one, uh, with regard to the Stolzfuss case, you'd indicated, Ms. Evanson, that, uh, that in the A-one district, meat processing is allowable?
By way of a s- special use. It's part of a list of special uses that are permitted.
I'm looking for it and I don't see it here. Was that a text amendment?
It was in two thousand eight. It was a te- text amendment, yes, sir.
So, it's not on this sheet. Okay. Uh, the second question, uh, for you, uh, Mr. Chairman, are we, you know, we had the work session on the gold mine and I thought we were gonna, I thought we were gonna discuss what we intended to do at this meeting. Did we put that off? Is there gonna be another work session? What's going on?
Well, what we, my, uh, way I thought we had left it is we requested the, uh, letter for the Board of Supervisors sent on to the state corporation. We would continue to work on a comprehensive plan, give them a little bit of time, them being the state, to see if they come back with any kind of clarification as while we're working on a comprehensive plan. And then, uh, if we don't get something, you know, here it is, almost July, you're probably reasonable not gonna get anything until December, January at the earliest, uh, before sometime next year. If we have not received anything, which is a very good possibility, no clarification, then we need to probably look at the, uh, we, we resolved everything but the issue with the M-two buy rights.
I agree. Um, I, I, you know, just a side comment, I, I think if you're gonna wait for the state to, uh, decide to split mineral and metal mining, or, sorry, um, non, non-metal mineral mining and metal metal mining, I, you know, in my experience dealing with people in the state, I think we're probably dreaming.
Well, I, I don't, I'm not naive. I don't disagree with you. But I would like to leave, if, if they were to take a step and put some clarification for us, then we could, we could work off of that.
Are we gonna set a time limit on that?
I would say we just figure maybe January, February, and if we haven't received something, then we gotta go back and look at M-two buy rights and go from there. We're, we're still, whatever, if we change that, uh, M-two district, uh, either by removing mining, uh, or whatever, uh, that's a major change. It has to be put into the comprehensive plan and then we write the ordinance to make sure it fits the comprehensive plan.
I agree. Uh, the, the big question in my mind is, you know, there, there, we were asked to, to come up with a recommendation about metal mining. In fact, we were asked to, to, uh.
We were asked to ban.
To ban it, and, and obviously that's not gonna happen. I mean, you can't do that. It's against the law, so we understand all that stuff. But we do have an opportunity to do something and I think, uh, in the public's eye, we're probably not doing very much and that concerns me. I do think that there ought to be a recommendation that goes back to the board from us, even though it's not in our purview, that they get started on something that may have to do with the civil rights part of this thing, which is basically the prove it safe first. It's not in our purview, but, you know, it keeps coming up at these meetings that we have a responsibility to do something to prove it safe first. It's not in our purview. I've said it a, a number of times. I even wrote a letter to the paper on that. But I think somehow, from our commission to the Board of Supervisors, there ought to be some recommendation to have them get started on, on the ordinances that are, that are their responsibility.
I understand what you're saying. I'd have to, we'd have to structure that and might be very beneficial to have Mr. Wright's input on that.
Well, I, I'm, and I'm happy to hear what he's got to say, but I, I, you know, it keeps coming back to the planning commission and it's not anything we can do anything about.
Well, and, and I don't disagree with that and that's, you know, I've said that several times, that that's, you know, we're, we keep, uh, we, our authorities limited to the state autho- powers that have been granted to us and special use permit is a framework we work with then. Uh, again, I'll discuss that with Mr. Wright and see what he has, see if he has some suggestions.
I'd appreciate hearing from you, because I, we're land use, we're not civil rights.
Exactly.
So, if, if those questions continue to come to us, you know, it just, it, it, it sort of presses us into a, uh, into a scenario where we're considering things that are not in our purview. I would like that to go to the individuals who are responsible for it.
Right, I understand where, where you're coming from. I will discuss that with Mr. Wright and, uh, see what his input is on it and, uh, we'll, uh, I'll, I'll re- report back to the commission.
I appreciate that, thank you.
No problem. Any other commissioners, anything?
Yeah.
Yes, Danny? It used to be a slaughterhouse right there in Deewin, right across from, uh, Sea Millen. I don't know if y'all ever remember that?
I remember.
Some of the younger folks don't remember.
I do. When they got stuff.
Yeah, it used to, yeah, right there, that concrete building, the people back up and drop a cow off and come back and get it in the bag.
And back on the school, too.
Behind the school, we get.
Yeah, down, um.
Fannin Lodge, yeah. Oh, yeah, oh, we're talking about, um, I can't think his name. He went to school with my brother.
Do people that process deer fall into the same category?
Do it.
They, um, wild animals versus domestic animals, there is a difference according to the Virginia Department of Agriculture. Um, wild animals such as deer, rabbit, squirrel, they're not, um, regulated as animal protein such as beef and poultry protein, I guess.
So, if somebody's doing deer processing, they don't fall into the same, uh, zoning rules as?
No, they should still be regulated by the county. So, if they're operating in a place that does not permit it by right, they still need to seek the approval for the meat shop from the county. There, there are a couple of locations, um, I know we, um, on Troublesome Creek Road, Mr. Blackburn owned a meat shop for years. That has actually been in existence and operation since nineteen seventy-two. It does operate by, um, Virginia Department of Agriculture and the Health Department. That was confirmed to me when the new tenant moved in to continue the same type of business. Um, and I believe that the, um, slaughterhouse in Deewin was in the town limits. I do remember that quite well.
Right across from Sea Millen.
Pick up some hogs long ago, long, long ago. Um, but the, the meat processing, whether it's wild animals or, um, cows, sheep, goats, or poultry, they still need a special use permit. If I ultimately approved or decision by the Board of Supervisors to operate in compliance with the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
All right. Before we go, I'd like to, I'm gonna put, uh, Paul and Stephen and Danny's court here about the girl's softball. Softball, yeah. July the seventh, we gotta go into another game in Power Team. Now, it's a state, correct? Yes. Very good, congratulations. Them little youngins are doing a good job. Not very good. Just on, just on another question. Since we're getting different pay next month, Ju- uh, July, do we still need to fill out this paper or not? I guess you gotta need the mileage, don't you? You still need the mileage or was that incorporated?
I've not been told that it's not incorporated, but we can give you an official, go ahead and fill your forms out, of course, this evening since it's prior to June thirtieth, and then, um, I'll send out a text message or an email to confirm mileage July first of one. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, I just wanted to know. All right. If we have nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you.